Seventeenth, two thousand.
Eighteen, not seventeen.
Minutes. Yeah.
I accidentally fixed that twice. I will fix it. It was just not here.
Motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes with the correction.
Second, is there any other discussion? All signified or saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Citizens input. Full house, citizens input. Sean Harley.
Yeah, I just want to speak a little bit. I know there's some thought process going on on this, donating some money for this housing deal. And not that I don't know that it's a good or a bad idea. I guess I just have an issue with using taxpayer money. At the end of the day, when we have a lot of projects around this town that needs done, that money could go a long way to fix. Speaking of curbs that are falling apart all over town. There's still a lot of streets around this town that need to be redone. That money would go a long way to benefit all the citizens of this town with taxpayer money. Instead of building a house or something for somebody that they haven't lived here all their life like I have. And I hate to see our streets and our infrastructure getting as worn down as it is. I really do. I wish that this council would really think hard before they spend this money in what I think would be an unwise way. And I'll end with that.
Okay, thank you. Mark Umbel.
Well, Sean, I disagree.
Of course you do, Mark.
Well, you know, we can fix up our curbs, we can fix up our streets. But if the town doesn't grow, it doesn't make any difference. I mean, we've, we've put on, what was it, seven houses in ten years or something like that. Tax, our taxable base has shrunk three to four million dollars over the last several years. So, if we don't have housing, we got a, we got a shell building out there that can be as big as 300,000 square feet and could hire-
Manufacturing Center.
Sorry, Jerry. Don't be go back and forth on that. But where are those, you know, if, if, if you get a business in, where, where's that middle management going to live? We don't, we have no housing for them. We have people that would love to be in the school system. We don't have housing for them. So, that's the first thing. Secondly, it's not necessarily taxpayer money if we use electric or something like that. I mean, that's coming from utilities. So, it's not, it's not a tax base.
It's, the town's money is the taxpayers' money at the end of the day. I don't care how you look at it, Mark.
No arguments, please.
No, no arguments. I'm just saying, we either grow or we shrink. We spent quite a few years not doing anything and I think it's time that, uh, we've done the shell building, we're looking at Speedway, we're looking at other things, we're looking at walkways. Manufacture housing.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Uh, and I just think it's, uh, it's time that we start growing the town. Thank you.
Jim.
I would like to ask if the town could put up their, over there on Dewey Street, since I live there at 416 on the corner of Kennelworth, if they could put up signs for no trucks to let them know they don't turn to the north on Kennelworth. Just put a sign right there at the end of the road. And then possibly as you come off of 10, heading south on Kennelworth, they put signs up there letting them know they're not to go down that road. I've had semis hit my truck, or the rocks I have on the corner of my lot, three times here in the past month probably. And even today, they had to come and push a rock back out of the road that the semi had hit. I'm thankful the town moved it, they just shoved it right up in the yard where it's like three feet away from the rest of the rocks that was hit.
I think there is, there used to be one coming from the north. I don't know if there is from the south or-
There's one down there towards McIntyre's. They're down there towards McIntyre's. It's not right there at the corner where semis could see it. And I know their GPS is telling them to go straight there at the curve on 10 to come down to go to the bottle factory and but to even turn down 1st Street going towards the bottle factory.
Okay, we got it wrote down.
Alright, thank you.
Anyone else? Chuck Duett.
Um, just to address what was talked about earlier with housing and the need and that sort of thing. I've been talking to contractors. I've got two developers right now that are interested in the area. They're on, uh, north of Marshall Street. So, if either of those two happen, I don't see that there's going to be any town money going into it. That'll be developer money. So, hopefully I'll hear something back. Either by Friday or the first of the week, let you know. But, um, I, I think that's the best way to do it. You don't have taxpayer money, but you do need new housing. So, by doing it that way, perhaps everyone could be satisfied and benefit from it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Not? Full business.
Attorney report.
A few things, start with a couple simple ones. First, uh, the farm lease, I've got that prepared. No reason that we can't go ahead and execute that. I'm still waiting to get it back from Bill Boris. I sent an email to him back on the nineteenth of January. Didn't hear back from him, sent him today a reminder and he says, "Sorry, I'll get it back to you." So, uh, I'm not really concerned, but just letting you know that we still need to get that signed. But here is the actual agreement that can be signed. George.
Also, just an update from Adam Lucavell on our tax sale, uh, property. He says the first round of notices are going to be going out this week. He's also going to publish notice. You gotta wait 120 days, um, and then file a petition requesting the tax deed itself. So, I might give one more update from Adam just to make sure things got published and things got, notices got sent out. But I'm, we're probably going to have a period of time here where we're sitting around and just waiting for the next 120 days, roughly four months, to see if anything gets redeemed or if he can petition for a tax sale. So, I may give you one more update, but then that may be it for a while.
So, clarification? I was thinking this April could have, so it's longer than that?
According to Adam, it's going to be 120 days from once that he issued the notice. And that's when it goes out, it's sent. So, if you say that's this week, four months on top of February or some kind of June date, I would tell you soon.
Okay. I was under the impression that it'd be April initially. Four months from the time the town-
Acquired the certificate?
Yes.
Yeah, according to Adam, he's saying 120 days from-
From time? Pardon? From the time you file?
No, from the time the notices, the notices indicate you have X amount of days. I probably assume or imagine that's what I'm used to seeing on regular tax sales. This one's a little different, but, um, it's typically from the notice. I should say, I'm not shocked that a deadline would start to run from the date of the notice.
Thank you.
Next, guys, I've got, uh, it's an issue regarding the manufacturing center. We had a technical review committee meeting today, uh, this morning. The purpose of that was that Marshall County Economic Development Corporation now has a subdivision plat showing basically the, the thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two acres subdivided out into three separate parcels or lots. I think you've all got a copy of that that you can look at there. The one issue that we did discuss at the technical review committee meeting this morning was the fact that parcel number two is where the manufacturing center is being constructed as we speak. It's also, the issue that was discussed was that parcel two will be retained by MCDC, but it's 17.82 acres. Earlier, the town and MCDC, there is an agreement that said that it would be not more than 15. That was an agreement from back in, uh, June of 2017. So, it's going to be up to the town, this board, the council, to say that we would accept less than, or I'm sorry, that we would allow transfer to standard more than the 15. We're looking at 17.82, um, is where that's at right now. Go ahead, Chuck.
The technical review committee did vote unanimously to send us to the town council to work out the acreage. As far as everything else, appears it's going to be done the way that, that we want it. But, um, after our meeting was over, there was some discussion about the road coming in from, uh, West Street up here. And I'm kind of in the middle of all of this learning here. West Street, um, at one time was thought to have come all the way through here to be able to service this and this to the back. I don't know whether discussions were made or not. But if that happens, the way that it is now, this is the, this is Dewey Street here. This is proposed building here. And these are the different phases. That would take this whole facility up to 300,000 square feet. Okay? West Street is right about here. Okay? Roughly. The proposal was made that if this street were to come through here, they would, the utilities would want that center line extended through and then, um, 30 feet on each side of that. So, you'd have a 30-foot road, 15-foot easement, 15-foot easement. Now, this, in my opinion, the 300,000 square feet can still happen. It just wouldn't be continuous. Could slide forward, back, a little one arrow went up. But that's not my decision to make. You guys are the ones that are determining the acreage and everything else. It would be back close to the 15 acres that you were talking about. And I know what Jerry's going to say, and he should have his chance to say it. And that is that he's marketing this as 300,000 square foot, uh, potential facility. And he doesn't want to get away from that, and I understand that. But if we brought this back slightly, moved this way, then I think we could do it. They could come in and get abarians to go right up to the lot line. Because if they were built on the lot line, we would still have 15-foot easement and then a 30-foot road. So, they could maintain the end of the building with that 15 feet of easement there. But that's just, um, what was discussed and that's kind of what it looks like. You guys have any questions about that?
So- As far as the utilities on that, Jamie, that was the only reason for a straight shot down West Street to extend the utilities so they'd come in?
No, we're, we're okay with that one. The utilities for right now are just east. And it'll be, there's easement on that, on that map there, I think.
But what I'm saying is, what he was just saying, if we would run a straight-
Well, if we want to continue West Street on to the south, yeah, that, that could be a-
But it doesn't have to join up there. It's not like there's truck traffic or anything, so the jog wouldn't make a difference.
We never laid it out.
Yeah. We just don't know that far ahead.
Jerry?
Sure. The lot line is its proposed in, in the plat. It's going to be the center line of that street going north and south. When we discussed it, as you recall, Jamie, we discussed how we were going to come up with stuff. This is three. On that particular area, we were very careful when we say that, that we would have a jog on West Street as a result of the problem. I don't know where we ended up with the utilities. That was part of the conversation. Jog on West Street to further to the east?
I, I don't recall that, but I, I don't know how far we got with that. I know, I know there were several different ideas of ways we could work that seventeenth road, but, um-
The other thing that I wanted to bring to council's attention was the right-of-way, there's almost 1.8 acres of right-of-way that's included in this, uh, parcel, in this plat. So, 15 acres, we took a, our best guess at the time. The building is positioned further, uh, north. East corner is positioned further to the west to allow for further development, should we get there.
Where are you back at?
That's it in a nutshell. It's basically, is there, is there some extra maybe in parcel two off to that west side?
Yeah.
I mean, the building can still fit, but, um, it's, it's maybe 100, 115 feet, I think, is what we kind of looked at today in terms of what they could have. Still have a building, still have their setback for the site yard. I'm not talking about any roads either, but, um, I don't know the property, but it's just, it's up to the council what you guys want to do.
George, I propose that if Jamie can tell us definitively where that, how much room he needs for that easement, I can have the engineers move that over if that's a concern. But at the end of the day, we wanted to include, if this is your road, you want to include easement for the utilities on Lot Two. Oh, it's Lot Three. There's more land over here. There's less land over here. And the other thing is we've got a, you've got the, um, uh, the drainage tile over here on Lot Two. There are Lot One, there would be impacts, that's what we can and can't do.
If West Street becomes a mini artery for people coming in in their vehicles to work, the straighter shot is going to be the fastest route rather than jog right and then back left to get into that.
Well, I wouldn't interrupt that.
I don't think we're pointing everybody-
You don't want people coming up from the park going out to work here, but you don't want to develop.
Can I answer, but?
Input.
Just to really screw you up, as redevelopment, we've talked something totally different. So, I can't tell you not to take a side, but in Jerry's defense, none of this has been 100% laid out. When we first started doing this, it's kind of wherever he starts. One of our conversations for a month, you mentioned it was actually taking West Street out. It would not come over the tracks because, listen, this is all speculation. If your bottle factory wanted to expand at some point in time and go east, they're going to take some of that land anyway. So, just to remember, you've got to think down the road farther than tomorrow.
As far as the utilities, that's not a problem. We can get the utilities back in that area through a couple of different ways. So, I guess it boils down to whether we want West Street to extend to the south in the future or not, or if we want to have a jog there. And, and there may never even be a road that goes back there. We, we don't know. There's just too many roadblocks.
But you may never have a manufacturing facility that goes that far either.
But you might.
But you might, the same as the road might. So, it's up to you, by to make a decision on what you do.
You know, George, what I would propose, once again, Jamie can tell me specifically how much easement he needs on that western edge. I'll have the engineers redraw that a little closer. It may or may not line up with West Street. If the concern is, is that western edge is maybe too far over, then I can have the engineers, as I said, redraw that line. I'm not guaranteeing that it'll line up. But we have to have a 40-foot, um, we have to have a right-of-way if we're going to put the road in. We have to have a 40-foot side setback. So, if you look at the line, just so everybody understands what I'm talking about.
You guys see down there?
Yeah, I understand.
Literally where this was designed, this was going to be the center line of it. 80-foot, with, uh, 80-foot, which is big enough where you grow if we were to extend. And the utilities are going to be along this line. If the road goes in here, we still have that. That's why engineers-
Yes.
Yes. What I'd be careful about is trying to engineer this.
You want more, 30 more or?
See, I thought that was a whole family, so bring truck traffic in from somewhere else, not even use West Street.
No, West, West Street, my opinion, would be used for street traffic, cars, SUVs, or whatever.
Right. But still, you don't want that much traffic down through here.
You're running semis down there every day right now.
They're not supposed to- True streets here are no trucks and drivers.
They do, and we see them.
Yeah, they're not supposed to.
Okay. So, the issue is, do we grant him the extra, which the tech review says to do it? And we go ahead with the size of the building, the way it's going to be already laid out? And we were about streets later?
No, the tech review said it was up to you guys. The tech review did not say you have it.
I said you recommended for us. You're saying, you're all for it, but it's our decision.
No, no. The, the technical review committee just not for us. What we were agreeing on was three parcels here and this with layout as to however you wanted it to be. Okay, this is what we talked about, not about where the streets are going to go. Technically, was initially required. This is just what we said. Parcel here, parcel here, three parcels. And wherever this moves to is up to you guys.
And Jerry's saying that he can, he can have that redrawn with talking with Jamie and working with him to try to match up the center line of West Street to see where that line could be.
No, I said, as I move the line further over as far as we can, it may or may not line up.
You don't know where that's going to be.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to engineer this at this table because that's why the engineers get paid to put everything on paper. But if the, if the concern is, is this line's too far over, Jamie can tell me explicitly where, how much easement he needs? Then we go back and we can probably move over to the east more, but I'm not guaranteeing that's going to line up with West Street.
Same building.
The building.
Building's where it's at.
Where it's at. It's been designed to allow for some variations in here. I can't move this one over.
That's a lot of metal up there.
Building, very exactly right, the building can't go any farther east. But if you shorten this up, draw this out, it's still the same square footage. Who said a building has to be rectangle?
No, it's, it's designed a special way, Chuck.
I, I know more about buildings than you know about.
Okay, fine. Okay.
I'm not going to get into it.
We're good. I understand. Thank you. Is everybody clear as mud or not? We got this down?
Bottom line is, we need to decide to give them that. That's the bottom line. And then the rest of it we worry about.
17.82 instead of 15. So, what are we looking at, Derek? What are you, what are we asking for? To let him go with the 17.82 versus the 15?
Yeah, I mean, that's all there is to it.
Well, the council has options in terms of, council could say, "We don't care, we'll, we'll just relinquish the 17.82." Council could say, "Jerry, let's, um, let's have you here with Jamie and, and see where you can get that line on the west boundary." And it can come close to matching up with West Street or not, but it's going to depend on where that building is right now. That's already been determined. So, I, I see those as the two options. I guess the third option is you say, "Nope, we agreed to 15 acres and that's what we agreed to." But that's going to put a pinch on having a 300,000, or 300,000 square foot building on that parcel.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we give them, give Marshall County Economic Development the 17.82 acres. So, we're adding 2.82 acres to the agreement.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on this now? We've heard both sides. Input? If not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye? Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
That's three, two. Okay, jumped out early, thank you. Next, Derek.
That's it? Well, that's it for attorney report. The next item on the agenda, I'll have something to talk about as well.
Make a motion to accept attorney report?
Second.
There's a motion, a second, accept attorney's report. All favor? Aye. Opposed? Carry. Argus Community Development Corporation.
All right, last meeting, and I had more than two weeks. I appreciate that, I realize that. But, um, really wanted to look into, again, the whole concept of this Argus Community Development Corporation and then basically a contract for services is how this is being presented with the town with the idea that that money would then be utilized to do a fair amount of things, not just development out in colonial estates, but would be utilized to do other things as well, but other services would be provided to the town. And I, I think there's been a summary presented to the council with this, uh, what we want to call this, but pamphlet, what have you, that we got to look at the last meeting. My concerns were just that this is a, is an unusual arrangement, nothing that I've seen before, nothing that I'm familiar with, and I really wanted to look into it. What I've done to look into that was I've talked to Jody Woods, who's a affiliate with the Indiana Association of Cities and Towns. Her response is, "Can't answer your question." I basically gave her this, oh, a little over a page email, kind of outlining the proposal, what it is that is, is being discussed or talked about. She wasn't sure of anything one way or the other about it, but said that there was a gal there in her office that might be able to help or provide some insight. She'd sent one email back with some- She'd sent one email back with some cursory questions, but almost as if she didn't really comprehend what I was talking about, so I cleared things up to her, never heard back from her. There's a thing called a list serve. It's basically the Indiana, the attorneys that are associated with this Indiana Association of Cities and Towns, basically if you're a municipal lawyer, you can post a question on list serve. And basically, any attorney that's part of that organization reads that question, and if they know anything about it, then they'll respond, and oftentimes they do. I posted this whole thing on list serve. I got one, I got two responses. One response was the guy that sent the redevelopment handbook from Barnes and Thornburg that I said might be good to just circulate to redevelopment. I don't know if you've got that yet or not.
Yes.
He didn't answer the question. The other gentleman that responded said that they do something that's similar to that to get houses to have a tact for humanity, but it doesn't involve any contract for services. So, it was really kind of a sub-issue, but that's the only responses that I got. And guys, I mean, I'll tell you that, you know, I've spent a lot of time looking and trying to find basically a statute, some kind of regulation that says, no, you can't do it this way, you can't do this at all. I can't find it. I'm not sitting here promising that it's out there somewhere, but I'm saying I can't find it. Nobody that I've talked to is aware of anything like that. So, I'm at the point where I'm saying, if council wants to move ahead with this, if ACDC wants to move ahead with this, I'm not gonna sit here and say, no, I see something that says you can't do it. I'm still gonna be pretty cautious about how it's set up, the way it's set up. I do kinda compare it to the MCEDC agreement that we have. It's a contract for services. We pay MCEDC to get services. We don't get a product, but we get services. So, there's value to that, and that's really what we're talking about here with this ACDC corporation. So, that's where I'm at with it. I'm not gonna say, no, you can't do it. I haven't seen anything specifically said.
Can I just say something? And I totally, I respect Sean's opinion and his concerns. I think that we need to get over the concept that this is just rebuilding one home. This isn't the fact that we're building a home. I mean, as a matter of fact, the ACDC, we didn't set out to want to build a home. That wasn't it. There's a whole lot of planning, a whole lot of discussions, a whole lot of meetings that have been in place. This is a community project, whether you want to believe it or not, or if you're looking at it differently. The, we build a home. You get, first of all, the home that we want to build, or the home that we would build, would be on a lot that is serviced by Argus Utilities. So, first of all, Argus Utilities will get a return on that investment. The town of Vargas gets a return. They get higher assessed valuation, they get more property taxes. The school, the home that we're building, we're targeting a home that would house a family with children. So, it isn't like, we're not building a nine-hundred square foot home. So, there, hopefully, we can get a couple kids, two, three kids, the school benefits from it. I mean, it's a whole community project. Then, from that sale of that home, the ACDC is then, we have a whole plethora of projects that we have talked about and that we would like to do and take on, that the town doesn't have the time, the ability, or even the resources to take care of. For instance, we talked about the Speedway project. You've got all that in that brochure that you have. But the Speedway property, there's, you know, we talked about a Christmas in April project. So, I mean, there's a lot of things that the ACDC wants to do. Not one of us on the ACDC is benefiting from this in any way. It's not for us, we're doing it for the community. So, it isn't like we're getting something out of it, other than seeing our community grow, seeing our community become larger rather than being stagnant. And to go back to the, one of the main reasons is, if you go back to our comprehensive plan, this is all part of the comprehensive plan. This is, I mean, how many times and how many years have you as council people even sat up there and have heard there's no affordable quality housing in this town? So, I mean, it's just an opportunity for to start, and, you know, I welcome, like Chuck said, I welcome, and I think the whole board welcomes, any developer that wants to come out there. But if we get one started, it's just like, I mean, you build one, and then next thing you know, you may have two, three, four going up. So, I mean, it isn't to say that we wanna build thirteen homes out there. We just wanna get it started and then let it blossom on its own. There's a lot of potential there for things bigger than just that one home. That's what it's all about.
Rob.
The town will also get the value of the lot upfront. So, they'll get the, we will buy the lot from the town right upfront to get started. And I miss Chuck's input, but.
Other developers coming in.
Right. The whole gist of our idea with this, you can set out there with eleven lots. It's very seldom that somebody puts a subdivision in, throws a for-sale sign up, and somebody comes in and starts building houses. They wanna see houses go. We hope to jumpstart that. And then Chuck brings in a developer, or even just a contractor, that builds another house. Maybe a year from now, it's stagnant again, we go back and build another. So, it's a boost to the economy of the town, kickstart. There is other ground out there, so we would hope in a year or two, those eleven lots are full, and we look to expand even further.
I guess that'd be the only other point I would bring up. There's no certain number. I don't want you to sit here and think, oh, eleven houses, and the town of Argus is done. That's been our problem. So, get the mindset, until you get twenty developers building ten houses apiece, we're not done. So, there's room, we need housing, and it's not just here, but we might as well try to beat these other communities to the punch.
And to look at your local market, I mean, if you get a home in this town that is a decent home, I mean, that is in good shape, it does not last, it sells. Because there's people that want to live here, there's nowhere for them to live, no quality housing for them to move into.
You might correct me if I'm wrong, but in the last four months, fourteen months, there's been two new homes in that subdivision out there.
And we're good.
So, doesn't it seem like that was a jumpstart?
But did anybody else jumpstart since then? I understand what you're saying, but we keep sitting back and nothing happened.
Well, and I'm not disagreeing.
We've sat back for forty years.
I just know from the inspections that there's two new homes out there.
And I hope to tell you the next year, there's ten, but.
I agree.
Do you guys have a budget on how you would spend? I didn't, I don't think I've seen it.
I'm not gonna say a budget per se. The housing that we want to put in is going to be that one fifty to one, probably eighty range, depending on what we can get back. Obviously, we're not gonna go out and build a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house, hoping that it sells. So, we're trying to market to that smaller family, the affordable housing. So, the other project stuff that's on that list that you probably didn't say, is kind of, some of that probably can start simultaneously, some of this will take some, we're still gonna have funding campaigns and stuff like that.
Right.
I mean, this is trying to create this nonprofit, it's gonna be to create a nonprofit. I mean, if you wanna write a personal check, we'll take one also.
To answer your question on the house, yes, we do have a budget. We're with excavation, concrete, the house, getting it built or set, we're probably keeping it at that one-seventy-five, one-eighty range to get it in, get it put, and landscaping, the whole bit, ready to sell.
Okay, and how much is the lot?
Ten-nine.
Ten-nine.
And that would be included in the.
Before we even decided what a value, or what we would like to spend on a home, or what we think it is a need, we consulted with the realtor in Plymouth, and he said, look, if you had a home in that, you know, that range that we're talking, he says, in Argus, he said, we will sell. He said, if we sell.
That home that's on the north side was a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. The one that's on the east side, closer to two-forty to fifty.
And he told us, stick, you know, you wanna stick between that one-seventy and one-eighty range to be able to sell. It's not that a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home won't sell, but it's not the one that's in as high demand and something that's gonna sell as quickly as that one-fifty or one-seventy.
One-eighty must be your price point.
Even one-eighty.
He said one-seventy-nine.
One-seventy-nine.
So, let's say you have ten to twenty thousand dollars left. What is your plan on these plans?
That's where you see in the list, like, if eventually we get to the Speedway project.
Oh, okay.
Your Christmas in April.
Your Christmas in April.
We don't have anything set, and the one reason we brought up the Pokemon Department is.
So, this is more of a general.
This is a community.
Does this mean this isn't just a housing project?
No, no. And to get back to what Sean said, you know, there are a lot of things in this town that need to be done, but if we don't grow, we don't get more tax money, we don't get larger base, we're never gonna have the money to be able to do those things. And giving back a little bit, I mean, not necessarily are we gonna go out and fix curbs or things like that, but the Christmas in April, that's gonna be, I mean, you look at some of these homes and some of these people in this town that don't have the funds, that don't have the resources to repair their home, they may need something as simple as a front door. You know, they've got a rotted-out front door. You know, that's a good Christmas in April project. That's what the whole basis of, that's what we're doing, that's what we want to do. We're not, again, none of us are benefiting from this, we're not getting a nickel for doing it, we're giving everything back. I mean, we just want projects that make the town look better. First thing you drive into town, you get here at Michigan, and along the street, what do you see? The old vacant Speedway lot. I mean, that's one of the biggest, it's a big eyesore. So, I mean, that's one of our targets, that is a target project of ours, to be able to eventually somehow acquire that property and then make it look nice, however we do that. I mean, just to do something even just in the downtown is a huge benefit.
Just to clarify a couple things, we looked at numerous houses, four, five quotes to get in within that range of housing, so we've looked at more than one, just so you know that. The second thing is that we've identified Christmas is April. Christmas in April is kind of our next mantra for the town. But we really can't even make a commitment to that till we know kind of what we got. We can't say we're gonna do twenty houses in Argus, we can't say we're gonna do ten, we can't say we're gonna do one. But as a group, that is our next project, is a Christmas in April, emphasis after the housing.
We've got, that housing project's been there for fifteen to eighteen years, and if guys are wanting to build houses, why haven't they filled it up by now? That's my thought, and I agree with Rob. You know, get one up and get this thing started.
Do you remember when the first two houses that are on Marshall Street was built, the first, there's the box? It's been at least, and close to that, and then the rest that's set for a long time. And then three or four went in, and then it went for a long time, and then Stevens, and then that greenhouse, you know, and then these lives too, but it seems like there's long spans between everything.
And sometimes it's hard for people to vision and see, or even know what a house is gonna look like if they're just looking at a book, looking at plans. So, I mean, that's the reason we wanna put something, if you put it in, they can see it, they can touch it, they know what it looks like, and hopefully, the intention is that while it's being built, while it's being put up there, the people that are wanting to buy it, or the people that do ultimately buy it, can pick their own paint color, their own siding, their own carpet, things like that. That is the intention.
It's also the day and age we're in. It's the same reason we're building the manufacturing center. People don't have the ability, the want to sit and build a house.
Right.
Most people, boy, you put a new house for sale, though, they'll be right there and they want it.
I'd say the next one I'd use turnpiano.
Exactly, and that's where a lot of people are. I mean, and that's what we're.
I live that long.
Like I said, there's nothing, for any of us, and again, if you go back and you look at your comprehensive plan that we spent all the time, all the money, and all the effort on, what was one of the main identifying things in there is housing.
There's two other points to that. Judy was on the school board, my wife's on the school board. One of the things that needs to happen in this town is we need to bring kids into the school. I know of eight kids right now that their parents are driving them from other communities to go to school here. The school means that much to them. Now, out of those eight, there's at least a couple that if there was a home here, like what we're talking about, they would move here. On the houses themselves, we were looking to do in a full basement underneath the fourteen-hundred square foot, so with egress windows. So, somebody could move in there, they've got two kids, they've got another one on the way, they can expand, finish the basement off. So, it's a house to where a family can grow in that house. They can finish the basement later, increase their value, or sell it, you know, sell it that way. So, that's kind of what we're looking at. Our plans, I guess, are to incorporate with the school, to grow, grow the whole community.
Yes, the community. It's not the town of Argus, I mean, specifically, but it is for the Argus community. That's what we are.
Okay. I have a follow-up question for anybody in this group right here, and it's just 'cause I wanna know. Has anybody done the math, when the Fed gets done raising the rates this year, how affordable is a hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar house to a family of four in Marshall County?
Very.
And still, I understand.
A realtor right now, if you had one sitting in Plymouth, they could sell ten.
Because it's no secret, I mean, the interest rates are gonna go up this year, substantial.
Yep.
But they're.
There's still not gonna be a.
I understand that part, but everybody's used to La La Land we've been in.
Okay, we're good, and everybody's got their.
Just one last question. So, it says contracting for five years with the town, with two-hundred thousand paid upfront. Does that mean you guys are liable to come back and ask for more money at some point?
No, if you want my honesty, God, since I was the one that kind of put this together when I was on the council, my goal in all this is to get this started. I don't know how we would do it yet, but I'd love to tell you that we sell two-hundred houses, and we have that much money to give back to you. But I'm not quite sure how that would work out yet, but more or less, when this started, other communities were doing this, so I had looked in and saw, and there's just not an easy way to, as a council, you can't come tomorrow and put a house up.
Part of that dilemma is with a five-year contract, and like Randy is on our board. Well, we're gonna, you're gonna be made aware of exactly what we're doing, how we're doing it, what it's costing, everything like that. We're obligated to do that because we've got the five-year contract.
Right.
To expand on that just a little bit, so we put this first house in, and say we've got a hundred-and-sixty-five thousand in it, we sell it for a hundred-and-eighty, we profit fifteen thousand. That profit from that is what we would do, use for the Christmas in April, different programs. That hundred-and-sixty-five will go back into the account to do another house. Or if at that point in time, the council says, you know what, we've got another thing going over here, we think you guys should help us with, so it will always be revolving to where we.
That's what I figured, I was gonna make sure, yes, that wasn't something that.
It's not a bad idea.
We need some kind of a.
Well, first of all, we gotta figure out a contract.
Okay.
So, you can't, you know, we can't say, okay, we're gonna give you two-hundred-thousand dollars, but we have a contract.
That's why God made attorneys.
We need to have Dirk make a.
That's the boon, if you're gonna.
So, we need a motion to have Dirk make a contract?
Yeah, we need a motion for him to pursue a contract.
And Randy, no, I mean, I've already pulled, again, you know, I've kinda looked at this, the service agreement that we have with MCEDC, it's gonna really be kind of the framework or the basis for an agreement that we would have with ACDC.
Just change the wording.
A little bit.
What's pertinent to it.
Yeah, no, there'll be some changes, but, I mean, that's kind of the framework.
But, I mean, you wanna put in a guarantee that you guys are gonna build a house within the first year with this, stuff like that.
Absolutely.
You know what I'm saying? Yeah, you're gonna guarantee we're gonna build a house.
This will be me asking him after the fact if you do that, but I'm sure there could be something put in there, this board would dissolve, the money goes back to the town.
Right, right.
Yeah, the money's gonna be spent pretty quick.
No, I'm just talking, but what they're saying, I mean.
You're saying by the time they build a house and say you, we're gonna be out of money, is that what you're saying? By the time Derek gets involved.
And that's the thing, I'm not here nailing paying to me, but, and, these are things you guys do need to consider and think about, but money paid upfront is money that you're gonna have a real good chance of getting back. The best you're probably ever gonna do is get a lean on some kind of real estate that's still owned, if there was an issue or a problem, but short of that, you're gonna be chasing the five-oh-one-C-three corporation with little to no assets at a lot of the time.
So, we need that, we need a meeting on setting up a contract, a workshop.
I think you need a motion first to reach an agreement with ACDC.
Well, that's the contract.
No.
You have to vote to do, and then pursue the contract, correct?
You can vote to approve this, this theory, this idea, this concept, that, yeah, this is how we're gonna do it, and then work to finalize the agreement in a contract. I can, again, I can get a draft around by the time of the next meeting, but it's gonna be something that both sides are gonna need to look at and say, well, we need to tweak this, put this in, take that out, or whatever you guys wanna do. But at the end of the day, yeah, there's gotta be a meeting of the minds, these two entities, the council and ACDC, that, yeah, we can do this.
We'll get, on our side, we'll get an attorney, so we'll be comfortable, just you and attorney
We'll get, on our side, we'll get an attorney, so we'll be kind of interested, just need an attorney and all things, so we can scratch heads together. We're going to be bonded, have liability insurance and all that.
I don't know, I'd rather see money going into a community project, people actually being involved. I mean, we could repair our own curbs and everything like that, but if there's nobody behind there to maintain the curves at some point, then like ACDC, I'd, I'd rather see the money go to a group. They get a profit like that.
Suzanne, can you come up with the motion?
I move that we go forward with the contract with ACDC and the town for the two hundred thousand, five-year agreement by their service agreement.
I'll second it. There's a motion and a second to move forward with the nonprofit for the community, two hundred thousand. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Okay, now we got to get together on this contract. My reasoning for this is we've, we've heard.
No, I don't want to rush anything, so.
For Sean, and for Mark in the back, and for anybody else, this being up here, the reason I'm going for this is this is my twelfth year. We've been stagnant for ten at least. By no fault of anybody's but all of us, you know, just as well. We did the Uptown project for thirty thousand dollars. Argument was taxpayer money, what have you. Yes. Did, did we give Sean ten thousand dollars to fix his house up? No. Did we give anybody money to fix up their houses? So we're always going to have that argument. We bought the property. We're starting the shell building. If this is another step, I'm for it. Why? Manufacturing Center, Jerry, you're going to have to beat that into our head yet.
You have to be good until tonight.
Until tonight?
Stop listening to me, George.
No kidding.
Want, want it to come to warehouse.
Motion carrying.
And, and you're.
Go ahead.
Chuck, you said that you have developers that you're going to talk to, so that, that don't stop there.
And please know that we have already, we're doing the same thing. We had a presenter at our last, one of our last meetings, not at the ACDC meeting, but the task force meeting, who has, he has some, some great leads and some things. So I mean, we're not looking to do this whole thing ourselves. We're looking to start it and have some, we want somebody to come in and take it over. I mean, that portion of it, that's, that's our intent.
If it gets done, and you built, if you get the first house built and somebody else comes in and builds the rest of them, you can start doing the Greenway projects and hey.
Well, no, come back and say, where do you want to start?
Where do you want us to go?
That's the idea, is where do you want us to go next? Where do you want us to go?
Right, exactly. And hopefully, we both.
Suzanne's got something she'd like to say?
Well, I facilitate basically the task force at the moment. And in doing that, I've been tracking the vitality indicators for Argus. And our numbers are just sliding down. You know, Argus is downward just slightly. And we have to do something. We are making progress, hopefully the manufacturing center will help, but we have to keep pushing forward. Because we've got to get that trend turned around and start going back up. We've got to get more people into the town. Our tax asset base, you know, that's been going down. It has to increase. Kids in the school. Income within the town, which means more people. We just have to get more change within this town. Sometimes it's hard to grow, but it's necessary. Because the way the state is funding both the town and the school, small communities are not looked at favorably by the state. So we have to get, I don't want to be big, but we have to grow a little bit, just to survive. Because we're challenged to Argus. To me, we're at a fragile point. We can either continue going down or can change that trajectory.
This time last week, I was in favor of it.
So, and we appreciate you guys.
Jerry, you're waving your finger back there. Does this got to do with the manufacturing center?
The important thing to, to look at is what you, not only the comprehensive plan, but it's investing in yourselves. At the end of the day, it's, when I have somebody trying to look at the manufacturing center, we want to be able to demonstrate, we want to be able to communicate how this community is investing in itself. If I can't point to that, it's hard for me to say, invest in this town. We don't invest in ourselves. It's much easier for me to say, invest in ourselves, look at how we are investing in the community too. In the twenty-seven odd years I've been in this business, I learned that very early on. It's an easy conversation. You get always success in selling, manufacturing, come locate, and you say, look at what we're doing to invest in ourselves. That shows that the community has a vision, and they're willing to put their money behind their own vision.
Okay.
Can I add to that?
Sure, why not?
I just want to say that. You'll hear more about this later, but I, I think there's no better time to be in Argus right now. I think the manufacturing center is awesome. I think there's potential for new housing, regardless of how it occurs. The framework is there. I think there's a lot of other projects that the task force is looking at, starting to prioritize. An extremely nice, viable community to live in with a superb school system. To me, there's no better time to be in Argus than right now.
John, let me add a little to that. This town, our different departments that take care of everything in this town have, over the years, really dragged the field on. There's a lot of things that never got done. But you know, we've got, you go down to the park and you look down there with the baby and putting all these, there's, there's more work than done in the last three months than there has been in almost ten years. That is some of our, and right back there is the guy that's kind of got all this row, it started, might say. And he's getting it done, and it's just, and the town is, we're getting a lot of things fixed.
When it's done, no more raises, Jamie, sorry.
But it's, yeah, it's a good time, those things are happening. The deep problems we've had for years, and everybody just kind of, well, just kicked their head in the sand, or we got other things to do, and they ignored it. Now we're getting these things done. The more projects we get finished, the more things we get done, the better it's going to be.
You're not moving forward, you're moving backwards. As Jerry fills up the manufacturing center, those houses are going to be full. There's no way that, I mean, he's going to bring in more people.
Oh, so this all goes back to Jerry?
Yeah.
That's all Jerry's showing.
Okay. I, I think, I think. I think we've come to the, to the conclusion that we're all in favor of bettering the community, so. Next, we have board openings on the plan commission, redevelopment, and the BZA. Other old business, the only thing John Vanderwell here can kind of get up on that, we had talked about the wayfind sign grant?
Oh, yeah.
If you wanted to throw out there real quick, what you guys decided on that.
We worked on that.
It's waiting till fall.
At least, because we didn't want to jump into that and, and not be prepared and make us look like total idiots, so. We're search, surveying that and looking into and researching it more.
I think actually it's going to put us at risk by waiting because we found some other options and some other, some other resources rather than just the.
The only reason I brought that up is because of the town and said we were going.
Yeah, right, thank you. And once we get the.
So right now, for now, it's table till the fall, and we're working on some of the things that probably add to that, actually.
And I guess to explain, Suzanne brings that up, that we have these meetings, that's what the task force will end up doing. We'll get this stuff around, and you'll probably get presented ninety percent of it, but not everything, because I mean, we talked walking pass, which is a park issue. So I mean, there'll be some stuff that'll go to these other departments, but a lot of this stuff will actually come back to you or board.
Jamie, has everything been ordered and take all the vehicles and everything?
Yeah.
Did, did we sell the old backhoe?
No, not yet. We, we got listed for bids, but we haven't, I don't think we've received any yet, so. We've got to pray a little bit. Jerry, town finance it if we buy it back.
I heard right behind you that he needs it back.
There you go. Any other old business? There is no other old business, any new business tonight?
I guess in a way. I was contacted last week on the visitor's guide for this coming year. The problem was, it was due today. And it was eight hun, well, seven hundred ninety-nine dollars for a full-page ad. Then I didn't move forward with it. We didn't have much time anyway. But the task force is looking to add a marketing brochure for the town. So for about, I'm guessing for about the same amount of money, or somewhere in that range, we can have a brochure all for Argus. Which I think is probably more beneficial than one page in a guide.
And we did discuss that department as well. The department is on board with, with going in with you as part of our marketing.
But to put a little oomph into that, from a tourism standpoint, they added a secondary round of grants this year for that type of thing. For towns to do marketing, rather than just specific event items. I think they sent a ten thousand dollars, so. And we're going to put in for that is the town. So if we can get two thousand dollars from them for that, we'll use that money towards that.
As a matter of fact, it's not supposed to be an event.
Yeah, as a marketing.
I could just add, it's good, we want it to be more than a paper brochure. We want it to also be a digital brochure. Something that can be shared on Facebook and Twitter and.
Anything else?
No, we got complaints.
Well, I was contacted by Marshall County Historical Society. They are considering doing an architectural tour. This is still in the works. But in Argus, probably this summer, a lot of modern folk art homes. So this is in the talking stages, possibility. And the first thing that came to mind when she called and talked to me, I thought, we need to clean up Argus. Curb appeal. If we're going to have people coming into our town, let's be proud of it. That's my thought. It's just, just the little things, making sure the homes are neat, the streets are appealing. Sometimes it's just that little flower pot in the corner of it makes all the difference.
Okay. Thank you. Move on to claims.
Lisa?
The total docket for February seventh, two thousand and eighteen is three hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-one cents. The top five claims read as follows. Number one is input at a hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifty-one cents. Number two is payroll number two, which is thirty-four thousand, three hundred and ten dollars and fourteen cents. Number three is anthem at twenty-two thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and sixty-one cents. Number four is our first source lease bank payment of eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-nine cents. And number five is Republic Services at twelve thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty-two cents. The top five claims total two hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and seven cents, and represent seventy-seven percent of the total docket.
Motion?
To make a motion, we accept claims fifteen through one ninety-nine.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the claims? Any questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passed? Again, thanks, everyone, for showing up. I know most of tonight was about the benefit of Argus growing, so we appreciate that. Motion adjourned. Make a motion to adjourn the meeting? Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Talk to you afterwards, bye, so.